I told, I said, I'm not gonna call, I'm not gonna say anything. But I called him over and told him about it.
Yeah.
And he goes, uh, you know.
Say what's going on in your finger.
I don't know nothing about that. I don't think they got no one to talk to.
I've had that happen to me.
Oh, thank you.
And he's trying to get the state of Texas to call him up. He goes, uh, this is my license. He said, tell them to show you their license. And then he looked me up on the Texas.
Did Amanda come by? She asked me.
All right. Okay. She's been scattered. I think she's.
Tell me about it.
She's leaving in the morning and she'll be back there.
Okay, folks, we're gonna get the meeting started at 5:32. Everyone could stand for the invocation and the pledge, please.
Father, we do gather this evening and give you thanks for the Texas weather, for the freedom we have to meet, for all of the citizens present tonight. Give us the collective wisdom to do what's best for the city of Jefferson and guide us in all that we do. In your son's name we pray. Amen.
Amen. We lead this to the fire of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Tina. And I'm gonna ask council to bring their mics a little closer. I guess there's been problems with some of our voices into the mic, so you almost have to put your lips right against it.
I guess we can try and see.
There we go. That's as loud as you've ever spoken, Jim. Laura Omer. Evening, Laura.
Good evening. Thank you for allowing me a few minutes to just talk about the Planning and Zoning Commission. If you have not been contacted by your representatives on the Planning and Zoning Commission, would you try as alderman to get in touch with those people and talk to them because we have a very big project that we're going to be talking with you about tonight. We want to hold town hall meetings by ward and we want, it's of course open to everyone, but that conversation will be talked.
Five years at a time, so we have some stuff due this year that's already done. We have some more things due next year and some more things due in 2025, so everything kinda gets refreshed in that three-year period. But an awful lot of data, it would, it would really be a problem if we had to do all of that annually, to say the least. But we spent a couple hours, the four of us, doing that, so just progress is showing that city and county do work on stuff together proactively. Five Echo is actually a pretty big deal, the settlement of the RG3 and ACT lawsuit. So we've had this lawsuit in place since, I don't know, I was probably in junior high, I guess. No, it's sometime, it was probably eight years ago. And we went through a pretty painstaking process this fall. Mr. Turner and I sat and deliberated this with our attorney and the other parties on the phone and went back and forth for better part of two and a half days. We finally got it settled, but it still had to go through, of course, the, the old core procedure. But we have actually gotten two checks, one from each company, so the whole $135,000 that we settled it for, you know, Melissa has it, we have deposited it, so that thing's all wrapped up now. The, the other two components, we did get $135,000 in damages, which is a combination of lost water proceeds and, I'll just say, overhead, because we had to report stuff manually to them all this time. The other two components would be, we are gonna receive 50 meters as, I'll just say, repair stock that we will have our hands on pretty soon. We will, you know, Allen will have it for sake of using at his, at his discretion as meters fail. And then the third component is, we have preferential line treatment, meaning when we go and return and we need more seat stock, we go to the front of the line. Now, are we number one in front or are we second? Well, we'll see. But it'll take us a little while to run through 50, but as we receive five back, we're gonna order five more. So that way, the theory is, we should always have 35 to 40 with some in transit. So that's, I think when I was first elected mayor, two and a half years ago, someone said, you know how many lawsuits have been filed that you're gonna have to take over? It's like, well, okay, we have one less, so we should've ordered a sheet cake. Five Foxtrot City Hall update. So we did have three engineering firms come out. We only have two studies back. The study, what we asked them to do was come and assess that entire area, not just the city hall building, but the chamber building behind it, you know, the former police department and the former public restrooms, as well as the fire department, you know, parking area. I only have two of them, so we're not gonna make any judgment just by having two. I have been in contact with the third company. They promised me late last week that they would get us something soon and they, they just had some other priorities come up. So I'll keep everyone up to date when that gets there and then we'll kinda have to see where we go. Presentations, Ms. Colleen. Six Alpha is Tourism Quarterly Update. And just watch the courts.
I didn't put this in your packets, cuz I don't really feel like y'all will save this information, Melissa will, but it's just an update, so you know what I'm gonna talk about. It's the first quarter update for 2022-2023. Our hot tax collections are on track at 34.5% collected for the first quarter. We have three, three new B&Bs have opened this quarter. Danielle and Zach are doing a nice job at the CBB and appreciated their raise that you, they were given last year. Danielle always says, "Thank you so much." This time of year is very busy with rentals. Danielle does the monthly contact, constant contact on events and happenings. If you are not getting it and you wanna get it, be sure and call her at the office and she'll make sure you get this. It goes to businesses, our lodgings, and our database. The lights on the bridge continue to shine brightly, thanks to your help and to Hollis and Daryl, keeping them changed and going. The Tourism Board hosted the Meeting Planners International in November. We hope this move will get some small conventions or meetings to Jefferson during the week to increase traffic and revenue. They all had a wonderful time and loved Jefferson. Now, we haven't seen anything yet, but two of them said they were planning to bring some people here, so we're hoping they will. Our Vice President of Tourism, who also does our advertising, Pam Thomas, attended an MPI Meeting Planners International meeting in January in Dallas on marketing strategies, and brought back some good information that she shared with the board and she will have a video update on that. The quarterly magazines are going well, as is the new run of our city map. If you need a quarterly magazine for your B&B, if you have one, or for your business, like Will, if you need some for your business, please pick them up out here. The magazines seem to be liked and hopefully all the businesses are passing them out to even the day trippers. We are working with the Chamber to get the three-by-five map signs hung. I spoke to you in November about this when I did my report and we're on the agenda tonight to go back over this with you so we can get this accomplished. The new coffee pot and tree decorations were purchased and enhanced the tree and certainly have helped out here at the CBB. In March, I will attend the Frisco Garden and Home Show to represent Jefferson. We will pass out, well, our, our magazines are in all the bags that we pass out and I'm also taking flyers for the reenactment and I will pass those out also. We funded $1,000 each to two new events coming up this spring, Wolf Stock and the Lucky 5K and Fun Run. One is to help with the animal situation here in town and it will help raise money to fund that. And the Lucky 5K Run is the Lions Club. Both will be a yearly event and they intend to grow to a much larger event with other things happening on those weekends, so that we have some things going on in March. And then the Wolf Stock will be in May after pilgrimage. Missy Baldwin will be the Chair of the Music Friendly Committee, Community, and we will be getting this together hopefully in the next month. Finally, if you hear of someone who is opening a new B&B or Airbnb, please give them my contact information so I can get them on the hot tax list and registered. I have tracked down the three new ones in the last month and I mean, literally tracking them down, tracking the phone number, tracking who they are and knocking on their door. So if you hear of any others, please let me know. And again, a big thank you for supporting tourism. Now, on your last sheet is Pam's report of everything that we are doing at 4 o'clock, 5 o'clock in the morning, sometime she's meeting our good friend Rick Rowe. These are the things that she has done for us, working towards getting Jefferson out there. We worked with Joe McDonald to set up our Christmas tree. We also worked with Mardi Gras to get them out there for the Mardi Gras event this weekend and I think it turned out pretty well. So if you have any questions about marketing, what we're doing, or if you want to see about getting us to do something, Pam's number is listed there for you and you can give her a call. Are there any questions?
Thanks, Colleen. Thanks, Pam.
Thank you.
Okay, consent agenda. We're going Alpha through Golf. I'm gonna read through all of them. Remember, I need a motion if we need any of them moved out of consent into action. Seven Alpha, consider and/or approve monthly financial reports. Seven Bravo, consider and/or approve January 17th regular council meeting minutes. Seven Charlie, consider and/or approve February 7th special council meeting minutes. Seven Delta, consider and/or approve hiring Michael Youngblood in the Public Works Department at the rate of $12 an hour and be effective on March 13th. Seven Echo, consider and/or approve the Outlaw Nationals Car Show Event application for April 13th, 14th, and 15th. Seven Foxtrot, consider and/or approve East Texas Burn Run application for October 12th, 13th, 14th, 15th. And Seven Golf is consider and/or approve the Historic Jefferson Pilgrimage Festival Event application for May 4 through 7 and the parade on the 6th. Any motions to move anything from consent to action?
I'd like to make a motion to move E, F, and G to action.
Okay, we're gonna handle those one at a time, if that's okay. Do I have a second to move Echo?
A second.
Second by Will, so let me do a... Those are approved. We will handle then Seven Echo first, so consider and/or approve Outlaw National Car Show Event application. Hollis?
Well, my reason for moving all three of these events to the action is that I have a problem with these water barricades. I feel like they're a detriment to public safety and I think that we probably should consider stipulating that, that all the barricades be city issued, or city-provided barricades that can be easily be moved in case of emergency.
Okay. Other comments?
I would agree with that. I mean, I, I feel like the city provides the barricades and so therefore that's what should be utilized.
I've, I've just had several people come up and, and express a concern that if we need to move them for an emergency, can we move them?
Right.
And, you know, have a joke, you know, I was like, well, my Tahoe will move them, but not everyone's car will. So the real thing is, if we need city, excuse me, if we need barricades at a city event, the theory would be, we, we have plenty of barricades to issue, let's use the city barricades. Any other comments? So Hollis, are you suggesting that you would move for an approval of Echo, Foxtrot, and Golf if the use of city barricades only was the friendly amendment in each one?
I will.
Okay. Stanley?
Water barricade came about because numerous people would literally move them.
You can lift. Oh. Sorry, I'm just making sure everything's right.
That's all right. The water barricades came about because numerous people that didn't belong inside the barricades with their vehicles would drive around them, move them, drive around them, and drive right down the middle of where motorcycles were parked.
Yeah.
And someone could just get out of their car and, and move the barricade and drive around it. I, I've had altercations with people that drove around park and they refused to move and I had to involve law enforcement. These poor people had to come out and walk to where these, where these individuals are at and made them leave. Did they leave right away when they said they were going to? No, they weren't from here. I don't have to.
That is on standby, that if they're not moved out of the way, we'll come tow them to a fairly local spot where they can walk to them.
Exactly.
And, and get rid of them.
That becomes a public relations nightmare when you do that, because we now have social media and people wear it out. And they're not always truthful.
But if you do, if you do an application and you close a street, that street is closed. It's not open to subjective, it's closed.
Yes, sir.
So therefore, it needs to be nobody on that street after a certain period of time.
And can, and you can also just put up a sign saying, "Street closed, vehicles will be towed."
Believe me, we do.
We do.
And, and the thing is, is what you could do, I mean, to make, you know, I'm not trying to tell you what to do, but take a picture of, take a picture of the driver's license of the vehicle that comes on the street, have it towed to the suggested place, then have the vehicle ticketed. Once, you know, and if it comes a public relations nightmare, then you can refer to the very first thing. You were told not to be in this area and your vehicle will be towed.
Well, the, the water barricade solved a lot of the verbal altercations and, and the picture-taking and having to call a wrecker service and all this, it just takes it completely out of the picture. And if they're spaced appropriately, a vehicle, an emergency vehicle can't get through. So it's a tough call.
Smiling, smiling faces with, with the right attitude will go a long way toward preventing people from going through those barricades.
So without enough volunteers, we can't man all the, the street intersections to keep them out. And, and the volunteers are not being paid. If, if they choose to go and leave because they had an emergency or whatever, they're just gonna leave. We, we, that's happened to us numerous times and I can't fault them because something came up more important, but there you go. No volunteers are, are volunteers you can count on to work that whole, that whole time that it needs to be, that intersection needs to be maintained and controlled.
And this is just from past, this past weekend. When we have five state troopers and they all stand in one group the whole 72 hours, never move. There's something wrong.
And, and the barricades, I'll be honest with you, barricades are never completely full. If, if you've got, if you've got a golf cart, we pushed them out of the way with a golf cart before, cuz we do not fill them all the way up. And, and we do that for that reason. But the average person that drives through there is not gonna take the vehicle and shove it out of the way. They're not that desperate to get in there. But they'll move that hand barricade, no problem.
So I, I hear both sides of it, okay? We're here to only talk about these three as it pertains to water barricades tonight.
I don't have.
What I'm, what I'm hearing might, might be to, might be to get back, because it's more than, I mean, the, the street shutting down is more than just the people that are represented in this room. We've, we've got other groups.
Right.
And, and I know this doesn't solve tonight, but I think it's back to get representation from all the groups that historically have had a street shutdown and get them all here at the same time. Let's kick around ideas and solve it for everybody, because you guys are the ones that attract the people that come here and spend money and, you know, support the businesses. I think we need input from all, all the groups that have, because you, y'all have the same problems. Everyone's lacking volunteers. The smiling face thing I agree with, but you need enough people there to do, be the smiling face. So we need a, we need a cohesive way that, that we solve that as a town, so all the events prosper the same way. And if that means we've gotta separate the donuts from the DPS guys and break them out, we can do that.
That's what you guys are here for, to make that decision, ultimately. But we, we, we will not use them during the, during the car show.
Of course.
Just the motorcycle rally because of the motorcycles and there are just so many. But it brings.
And it was just an experiment last year and we didn't think we were gonna get the barricades, but they were donated. So we thought, okay, let's use them. They were given to us.
Could we do a test, like, before the event, just maybe?
It was a test.
Like, yeah, as far as like with the barricade? I know you said you're not gonna fill it all the way up.
Correct.
Kinda just like, you know, fill it so far and do a test to see if it could be moved within this, you know, amount of time?
So if we wanna have, if, if we wanna have a town hall to do this, we gotta do it in March, because we've got an April event on this plate.
Yes. But I don't have barricades, water barricades for the car show.
You won't have it for the car show?
No. I only requested it for the burn, which is in October.
Which is in October, so we have time.
We have plenty to figure this out.
Pilgrims just never.
I don't know what they're doing.
Pilgrims just has never used the water barricades, as far as I know.
Yeah, pilgrims is not my headache.
Just the burn, but car show, no, we just use regular.
Well, pilgrims, pilgrims does have a parade.
Yes.
Yeah.
But they, but they've always used just regular barricades.
Okay.
And, and now that that's been somewhat hashed out, I, I would like to get a little clarity on the responsibilities and duties of the event coordinator when it comes to street closers, street closures. It's my understanding that if anything occurs, good or bad, by a participant or volunteer, that the responsibility would fall on the event coordinator and the event insurance, which is required for street closures. To me, this says that the event coordinator is one of the first to be contacted whenever an issue comes up that has to be dealt with. And, and any occurrence that involves financial damages should be mediated through the city council and the event coordinator. This was my interpretation of it. And can this be brought up for discussion along the same lines with the barricades?
I, I think that's for the town hall.
Yeah. At a later date.
Well, but it's like, I, I think, we talked about events two years ago and some improvements were made. I, I think it's time to kick it back together and.
Okay.
Get all, get all parties that usually shut down the streets or, or just have larger events that don't shut down a street. They may have some of the same problems with security or trash pickup or whatever it happens to be. Let's put all the problems on the table, let's all talk about what potential solutions are and let's get solutions that work for everybody. Then we're all winning.
Cool.
But, but we'll put that together, we'll give everyone notice. But in the meantime, the only one on here that uses water barricades is Burn Run, which is in October.
Burn Run.
So we could, we could table that one until decided or we could approve it and knowing that we could come back on barricade swap at some point between now and October.
If, if you're okay with it, let's.
I mean, I'd just as soon approve it tonight.
That's what I think.
I'd just as soon approve it tonight with a, with a, we're gonna come back to the discussion, because that at least gives you the dates.
Yes. We have a motion on the floor right now.
She and our team players, we, we, we don't need to always get away, nor do we seldom always get away. But we, we will negotiate any situation that is the best, that's for the best overall.
For everybody.
Okay. Right. Who had the motion?
Hollis.
Hollis.
Hollis, what's the motion?
We're good?
I make a motion we approve all three of these. I guess we gotta go through one at a time, though.
We do.
I make a motion we approve E, which is Outlaw Nationals Car Show.
Hollis to approve Seven Echo. Do I have, here a second?
Second.
Second by April. All in favor of approving Seven Echo?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstention? Six oh. Seven Foxtrot, do I hear motion?
Motion to approve.
Motion by Will.
Make, with the caveat that we come back and discuss this at the town hall meeting.
Second.
Let me, hold on, writing. And April with the second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstention? Six oh. Thank you. And.
I'll make a motion to approve the Adam G, the Historic Jefferson Pilgrimage.
Approve Seven Golf.
A second.
By Will. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstention? Great.
Just to comment on these.
Yep.
Every single one of these events, these and any others, are required to get with the Chief of Police to work out all the details and that should be able to be.
Well, and, and I think there's lots of things that probably happen this weekend that are gonna.
Yeah.
Placement of all the barricades, because we, that, that was a.
Yes.
That was a kerfuffle.
Yeah.
Okay. Action items, regular. Eight Alpha, consider, discuss, and/or approve a request for variance on the five-foot and 10-foot setback line requirements for a future rebuild of a guest house that will replace an existing structure located at 217 West Lafayette. Tommy Tracy? And just watch any court, I can't see if you've got any courts over there. Okay, no courts. Tracy, can you just generally describe what you're trying to do, please?
Yes, so we are gonna be doing a tear down and a rebuild and our existing structure already sits on the property line, actually on the northeast side, the alleyway, it sits three feet over the property line. So we're going to bring that back in. And then along the backside, which is that northwest side, on the other alley side, we're requesting to go right up to that property line as well instead of doing the setbacks. And then on the, I guess what would be almost like the southwest side, where we border another property with a structure, we will do the required five-foot setback. So we're asking along the alleyway on the two sides to build straight up to our property line, which would still bring it in from what it currently is.
Okay. And so if I look at, if I look at this diagram, you've got an alley that borders basically the church, then you've got an alley that's kind of extensive and really goes into a, a field.
Correct.
The back of the rock house, maybe?
Correct.
I don't know who owns it. I don't know if it's this way or this way.
It's the, the rock house that's owned by the church, there, that empty, the, the yard area.
The backyard for them.
Yes.
And those are the two that you wanna build on the property line.
Correct.
They're, are they both?
Which is where our existing building already sits.
They're both over the property line right now.
One side is. The side that is facing the actual church is three feet over, so we're gonna bring that back into the, and we're requesting just to go to the property line, so we'll, it'll come three feet the other direction back in.
Okay. Does everyone understand what's being asked? You've got 20-foot of alley, if you're right on the property line, and then whatever distance this, these structures, plural, are from that. And I, the fence is up, so I can't, I couldn't really see exactly, but I wanna say there's part of that is a gap, part of it's not. But that's what they're looking for is to build on the property line, which is three foot more compliant than the current structure is on that side.
Correct.
And push out to the property line on one, but the property line that you share with an actual structure that you don't own, you would keep the existing city setback.
Correct.
Yeah. Just stating it for everybody.
I do have a question that just finally popped back in my head. Since this is going to be a two-story.
Yes.
Are there going to be windows on the existing alley that, between the church on the second floor, windows on that backside?
That face the church?
That face the church.
On the second story?
Right. And the only reason I'm asking that is because there is a, it's not what we call a primary line, but there is a SWEPCOS secondary line there, that if you have a window that is open by National Electric Safety Code that somebody can open up, you have to be a certain distance away.
Tommy, can you hear that?
And I, I think that's the area you're gonna be moving back.
SWPCOS came in and redid those utility poles and it raised everything.
Yeah, there's.
But I don't know. But I don't know, do you know what he's asking?
Yeah, we, we got with Swepco already and made the poles compliant. Okay.
So if there is a two-story structure there, we should be compliant with it.
Sometimes if you have a window, it just can't be something that they can open and reach out. Right, no, we, uh, we checked with Swepco already and the existing poles were out of compliance, so they moved them. Okay, got you, thank you. I'll make a motion to approve.
A second.
Eight A.
I've got Richard Turner and I've got Will Thomas. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstention? Okay, six oh. Eight Bravo, consider discussing or approve tourism in the Chamber of Commerce's request to place city map designs, or excuse me, city directory signs at the following locations. Uh, one is on the wall in front of the public restrooms on Polk, which is on city property. Number two is on the wall of the city hall building at the corner of Austin and Polk Street, which is obviously city property. And three is on the sidewalk area, which is bank private property at the corner of Polk and Lafayette. So Colleen?
Tracy's running for the state office.
Oh, okay.
Okay. What questions do you have? Y'all should have been given a diagram of what the, the signs are going to look like.
So that was one of my questions. It shows basically that it's going to be a freestanding.
And for the one at the bank property is going to be a freestanding. For the ones that are going to go on the wall, it will be attached to those walls.
The only question I have is putting it on the wall of the existing old city hall building when we know that that building is in very bad shape as it stands.
Correct, so at the time that we were requesting this, now we're knowing that we may not be able to do that one
Okay.
right now.
I mean, I, I wouldn't think there'd be an issue if you put it on a-
I think if you're creative on how it's attached and/or mounted, you're probably good.
Right.
That, you go cement sidewalk right to the foundation, so it's probably going to have to be attached.
Mm-hmm.
But maybe if y'all are creative on how it gets attached and thus it can be taken off and put back on some, redeployed somewhere else if, if by chance that building changes.
But do we need to wait until we get within, I mean, get an answer from TML Insurance on the building before we start?
Depends on how creative they are at being able to take this, if they can figure out a way to put it on and take it off that's fairly easy and inexpensive, maybe not, so.
May I speak to this?
Please.
All of you, excuse me, who have been at city hall can see that that building leaks. You can see that that wall is ruined and it continues to leak every time it rains. So if we're going to drill any holes into that wall to get whatever to stay up on it, it's going to cause more leaking and more issues. And months ago, Colleen, we discussed this, months ago.
We did, we discussed it, uh, but this was our original plan. So we were just going to bring it forth and look at waiting to see what was going to happen to city hall and everything like that. I talked to you about it back in November. And, uh, the one at the bathrooms, when you come out of the bathrooms, we're going to put it on that wall as you come out of the bathroom, so it's undercover. This one was just our plan and it's on, you know, on hold because we know the building.
So maybe table that one until we know what's going on and not trying to prove it ahead of time?
And I had a question.
Is table that one? We didn't know if we could go ahead and get approval based on after whatever gets done to the building. If we just need to table it and wait till everything's done with the building, we can wait.
Yeah.
And then we just need to look at the other two locations that are on here.
The one that's going to go up at the public restroom, is it going to go in the existing structure or is it going to be, y'all going to put it in a different place?
No, as you come out of the bathrooms, whether it's the man's or the woman's bathroom, there's like a half wall there. We're just going to drill and put it on that half wall. So that if you come out, that's what you see is the map. And it'll be undercover of the building in the rough.
So you won't see it from Polk Street, you'll see it when you come out of the bathroom?
Right, right.
I, I would think we'd need to table it because we can't even tell you when or if we would allow you to put it up on that structure or if that structure's even going to be there.
That's, yeah.
And that's fine, we can table that location.
I don't think anyone, there's a sign right now, looks great, it's big. People look at it all the time, it's just outdated. I, I don't think anyone would have a problem if that structure's there and it's in good shape, but I mean, to Melissa's point, probably no more screw, uh, no more drilling into that wall.
Right, we did talk about that, I mean, we're just, this-
I mean, if there's, if there's another place y'all wanted to deploy in the meantime, bring it back.
Yes.
And we can edit it and I don't think anyone has a problem with that sign going up, it's just that placement, that intersection? It's unknown.
That's fine, that's fine, we're good. Any other questions?
So-
What about maintenance?
What about what?
Maintenance and, you know.
It's the maintenance.
Does that get wiped down at all or does it need to get wiped down?
Of the signs.
Are you wondering who's going to take care of the maintenance?
Right, have y'all looked at that, maybe, you know, how, how long they last? The, I don't, is it fiberglass front on it or is it just-
They're going to be wooden structures, um, and then they will have kind of a roof area and then there is going to be like a, a-
Plastic glass?
Fiber glass over it.
Covering over it. So it is something that, um, as the map changes every six months, that'll be updated. And then of course, if the structure itself needs any maintenance to it, that's going to be something that we're going to be handling. Because we want to make sure these are, this is representing our, our town. We want them to look good, we need them to look good. The freestanding one is also going to have solar lights on them, so these aren't going to require electricity. That's how we're going to light them at night.
So the front light, you can pop off the front and change it?
We'll be able to. It'll, it'll be under law, uh, but we'll be able to make those changes to it if we need to.
Any other questions?
Um, the existing maps that are at the public restroom, so what are y'all going to do with those?
You're talking to, um, the freestanding one that's in front? We did look at that, um, but we decided against putting anything there and just to put it so that it be undercover and would last longer and ride should come out.
Other questions?
Motion to approve eight B, except for, um-
City Hall.
The city hall.
Okay.
Whatever you call those.
So Mr. Turner's, uh, made a motion to approve eight Bravo one and three.
Yep.
Second.
And Hollis.
And we have talked to the bank and everything and okayed all that.
Uh, all in favor of eight Bravo one and three?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Abstention? Okay, six oh. Do I hear a motion on eight Bravo two? To table?
To, I'll sub move to table.
Mr. Turner with the table?
Second.
Hollis with that. All in favor of tabling eight Bravo two?
Aye.
Any opposed? Abstention? It is tabled. Okay, thanks ladies, appreciate that. Oh, don't go anywhere, sorry. Eight Charlie is considered discussing or approve tourism in Chamber of Commerce's request to place map directory signs at the following locations pending approval from property owners. And the difference in Bravo and Charlie is these are all still pending property owner approval, that's why we split them. Eight Charlie one, at the corner of Henderson and Polk near the Red Bus Cupcakes. Eight Charlie two, at the corner of Austin and Walnut. And eight Charlie three is at Austin and Vale, but still trying to identify a location for the sign. So we put these on here, uh, to discuss. We can approve if we have the, I don't know that we can approve them because we don't have a destination. So if it's pending specific property owners, we could approve pending that property owner's approval. Are any of these approved by those property owners now since these agendas go, or are we, you know, five days old, so? They're outdated.
No, um, uh, and I thought Paul Moore was going to be here this evening to give us a status on two of them. We have to talk with Mr. Goolsby regarding the one near Red Bus Cupcakes, since that's his property. And then the corner of Austin and Walnut is Cliff Bodie and Anna Bodie. And Paul Moore was going to address that, I thought, before this meeting. So he was going to be here to give us yes or no, and we would have that information, but he's not here.
And there would be standalone signs like this also.
Okay.
Just so you know what they'll look like.
All right. Now, are these going to be on public property or on city street railway?
Um, all three of those are probably going to be all on, uh, private property.
Private property, okay.
Yeah, just like the bank location.
We would, we would still want to approve the signs going up.
We want to approve them.
Correct, correct.
But they have to be, they have to be approved by the owner prior to us giving permission.
So if we table these, should we just require that we have a sign?
A destination.
Well, but not just a destination, but something in hand that says, yes, as property owner, I'm approving the city to, uh, tourism to, to put that.
Well, we don't have that from the bank, do we? Did they sign off on that?
She hasn't signed anything.
Yeah, we haven't had her sign, she's been given this-
And the only reason I'm saying that is just simply for legal reasons. If somebody comes back later after you've installed it and says, hey, I didn't, I didn't say this.
Okay, so, yeah, we'll do that.
Even if it says for a certain length of time.
Don't you think they need for the bank also?
Yes, I, I think so. If we're approving something be put on public property, we want their approval.
Okay.
Yeah, so do I hear a motion to table eight Charlie one, two and three?
Sub move.
Second.
And, uh, so Richard in April. All in favor of table?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Thank you.
Great.
I do, I do have one more quick question. Do any of these signs when we do put them out require a building permit?
Oh, we did talk about that, yeah.
I got the form, but I didn't know it missed out under that, we didn't know.
It's a sign permit.
It's, there's a sign permit if none of, none of them have electricity.
No.
But a-
Are they permanent structure, like to me, brick, a brick?
Not brick, they will be wooden, but they will submit into-
I think it will-
And she said it would be lights on one of them.
I think it's going to have to have a sign permit. Because it's not, unless it's on the building itself.
Okay.
Because the thing is, the reason you do that is because if you put a sign there, number one, you don't want to obstruct traffic.
Correct, okay.
So.
All right, we'll get that, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, eight Delta, consider discussing or approve changing TML health benefits enrollment benefit waiting period for new hires. Melissa, you want to kind of walk us through this, please?
So currently for new hires, their health insurance benefits become effective immediately. And TML health benefits does not charge us for that first month premium. But going forward, effective May 1st of 2023, they're going to start charging us for that first month, whether they start at the beginning of the month or they start the last day of the month. They will charge the full premium and not a prorated or partial premium. So they have submitted this form to us for y'all to determine if you're okay with that, them charging the full premium for the first month of the employee benefit period, um, the full amount or if you want to have those benefits become effective the first of the month or wait 30 days or wait 90 days. By law, you can't go past that 90 days. So they've given us some options here to, um, consider and they need an answer by mid-March prior to May becoming effective.
So let me try to put some English to this. If someone today starts on the 10th and we employ them as of the 10th, we only pay from the 10th until the end of the month and then we get full charts the following month, on and on. TML has decided to change that. Now if we employed the same person on the 10th, we're going to pay for the whole 30 days of that first month. So they've given us three options. One is wait until the end of that first month. So they would basically, that 10th hire would basically be un, or, uh, no benefits for 20 days. Or we wait 30 days and it starts the next month or 60 days in the next month. So the key here is we are about to have to start paying for new employee partial months. Correct?
For the full month.
For the, yeah.
Yes.
So we have had quite a few new hires in the last, you know, six, eight months. They don't all start on the first. We could circumvent all of that and just say everyone has first, first of month start dates. Now, that doesn't help us attract people, that's the, that's the downside. It helps save a little bit of money. So in case someone was going to throw that one out there, I don't think it's the best one. It would circumvent having to pay the full month, but it wouldn't attract employees that have left a job, they need to get paid, they're willing to start as soon as we can get, get them going. So personal opinion, and I'm a finance guy, so I hate spending more money than I really need to, but, uh, to make our city an attractive place to come work, we can't let a partial month, you know, penalty that we're about to have to start paying from our insurance company prevent us from offering a good place to work. So I, I think we have to say that we're going to, uh, cover them in benefits from day one and we will have to pay that full month and eat the partial.
I think it'd also make it more attractive for potential employees to come to the city because if you're, if they're covered from day one under the insurance, then they know that they're, they, they're, they're taken care of. And they know that we're looking out for their best interest.
I mean, because if we're going to be charged for it anyway, why not? It, it makes no sense not to do it.
You wouldn't be charged.
You wouldn't be charged. The opposing side, if someone gets hired on the 10th, they have no benefits for 20 days.
Oh, okay.
And I think that's a penalty to attract people.
Right. Yeah, so I, I would say give it to them on the first, first day.
Anybody from a past life dealt with an insurance change like this? I mean, we have and we took, we took the high road and it cost the company more money, but it was, it was more of a hiring thing. We didn't want to have a penalty in our hiring process just to save a little bit of money on each new hire.
I, I know that there have been certain thing that it was, they kind of split it. If you were hired at the first of the month, first part of the month, it'd be one thing. If you were hired the second half of the month, you waited till the first.
Let me, let me ask this.
I guess the thing we, we got to look at is, number one, of course, we've been hiring more people lately than in the past. But need to look and see just what is it going to cost us?
So to that point, Melissa, correct me if I'm wrong, but aren't we budgeted like 1284, so call it 1,300 bucks per person per month?
Uh, just for their health benefits, it's about 1,200, or $12,000 a year. It's 970, uh, 72 dollars per month for the dental and the, um, medical.
So in the hire the person on the 10th, we would be paying a $300 penalty-ish. 340 bucks.
Which-
Doesn't sound like a lot of money, i- unless you have employee turnover.
It sounds like robbery from the insurance company. Because you're paying for 20 days worth of, you're paying a full month for, I mean, if you hire somebody on the 20th, you, they get 10, 10 days of coverage. If they're going to charge us a full day, full month, it should go back to the first of the month, even prior to us hiring them. That's just my, just my opinion, that's robbery.
And when you terminate, it goes to the end of the month. So if they terminate on the first day of the month, they continue to have benefits till the last day of the month, even though they're not employed.
But, but I don't have a problem with that because somebody's still having benefits. Right now, what we're saying is if they, if we hire somebody on the 25th, they get-
They get five days-
Five days worth, but we got to pay-
That's correct.
30 days worth.
But if a person gets-
That's robbery.
But if a person gets terminated on the fifth day, they still got 25 days of coverage.
Yeah, but we're paying it. I mean, because we're going to pay it at the first month.
Yeah.
We won't have any claims after day five.
Like I say, uh, the biggest thing is, is when a person, if, if we want to attract people to come to work for the city of Jefferson, we need, we need to let them know that we're taking care of them from day one. And then also, another, another thing is, is- And then also, another, another thing is, is we can go back to the very first scenario of what you spoke of. Hire, hire everybody on the first of the month, and then that way we know that they're covered. But either way it goes, I mean, you're gonna end up spending money one way or the other.
It comes down, it's not the employee's fault.
Exactly.
Right.
Exactly. It's not their fault that, and, and I mean, if you look at it that way, they say that an employee comes to work on the 10th, and he's got 20 days, he's got 20 days of, of uncovered time, and something happens to him in that 20 days, then what are we gonna say? Sorry about your luck?
What do we do if?
I don't know. It's, it's.
Because we have had people that have been hired and quit within the first two weeks.
Mm-hmm.
Right.
Yeah.
So Melissa, if I'm looking at the options, the first option is benefits become effective on the first day of the month following a new employee's start date. The second one is the first day following 30 days of, of employment, basically, or 60 days. So this doesn't give us the.
This is only if we want to change what we're currently doing.
Okay.
So if we don't want to change it, we don't have to change it.
So we don't have to change?
No.
But if we don't.
We just have to let them know what we want to do. If we want to keep it the same, we keep it the same. If we want to change it, we fill out this form.
But if we don't change, we'll be paying, we're gonna pay the penalty.
And when we budgeted everything in, did we budget it as if all the positions are filled?
Yes.
Okay.
So we have money in the budget because we have not been staffed all year fully.
Yes.
So that's it. These are three different ways if we want to change. If we stay the way we are, you hire them on the 10th, you gotta pay that extra 10 days.
So if we hire 10 employees through, through the year, worst case scenario would be 10 grand.
About, well, about that.
So Melissa, what's your opinion? What do you think?
I think it's up to y'all.
She's not gonna answer.
I, I would, I would like to hear somebody make a motion for eight Delta to continue with the current process and payment scenario that we have in place today. If you don't want to make that motion, you have to make one of three option motions in here.
I'll make the motion that we continue with our current process.
Motion by Mr. Turner.
I'll second.
Seconded by Hollis. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstention? Okay, there we go. Guys, I think we did a really good thing there. I think it's the right thing to do. We'll just see how painful it is. Uh, eight Echo, consider discussing or approve streets for the 2023 street campaign. So just a little reminder, we approved a list late last, well, mid-last summer. They couldn't get materials to start, so all of last year's streets are getting done this year. But we carried that money over, so we still have money for this year. What I put together, guys, a combination of stuff from Alan and Jeremy. So the first page is, it's kind of a summary of what we have. So the box on the left, it's, remember, it's still the old Ward, new Ward. So I did kind of the, the conversion, if you will, of what we approved in last year's campaign that will be done this year. So new Ward one, I'm sorry, new Ward three has 127 K. Two has 78, and three, uh, one has, I'm sorry, one has 75. So you can see that new Ward three has a little bit more, obviously, than the other two. What the big, bigger box on the right is what was left from last year's list. Because remember, we had, you know, call it 20 different options, and we chose these six to fit within the budget. These are the 14 streets that were left with the new Ward designated. Move for the right, Ward one has $500,000, but 11 streets. Ward two has 77,000, but only one street. And Ward three has 235, but only two streets. So I got with Alan and Jeremy and said, hey, we, we probably need some additional options for Wards two and three. Because if not, well, Ward two's simple. One street, 77 K, that's give or take what their budget is. We've got to look at the other two because I want to say Ward, Ward three has the 140,000 and a 95,000. So both pretty hell temperature. Everyone's got to remember, we have to have a rolling temperature where we warm to 65 degrees every day. Now, ignore rain, but we have to get, you know, and that's generally kind of a first of May-ish type thing. No, we're not gonna start streets in the middle of pilgrimage, but we will start it right after pilgrimage stops. We have a, a, a variety of items we can vote on tonight. Jeremy, I asked Jeremy and Alan if there were any what I call pet peeve streets, meaning this list was cobbled together from council a year ago. So some of those council members are not here. Uh, some of the current council that were voted on last May were able to add some streets. But what we haven't really gotten is, you know, Alan and Jeremy helped prioritize them, but I wanted to know pet peeve streets from Alan and Jeremy on streets that the council's not bringing to us that they would really love to stop having to fix. And there's probably a lot of them. So they have not given me that list yet. It's gonna take a little bit of time for them to get that. To say that we'd have that in March, probably. I mean, they've got a pretty good estimate. You saw how they were within $14,000 of the estimate that came in last year. So I personally would like a couple other options for Ward two and Ward three. I'd, I'd love to be able to say, hey, you're at 95, but hey, you got this 25,000, let's throw that one in.
I have two more.
You know, so Ward one seems to be well represented. We just need some from the new, and that's new Ward one. We need new Ward two, new Ward three. And some of those are gonna need to come from y'all, and some of those are gonna need to come as the pet peeve streets from Alan and Jeremy. So tonight was, we have enough to vote on, we can. Uh, or we can table this, get March, get a, get a little bit longer list so we can bet, probably best mix and match to get somewhere around 270, 275. So discussion, I just.
I just have a question.
I was bored last weekend.
While we are working on the streets, are we going to work on some of the drainage as well?
This, well, this is, this is just flat out streets. Alan's, you know, Alan's gonna need to work drainage, um, a couple different ways. In this year's budget, we have a couple different, uh, third parties that we've budgeted to come in and cut back brush on both sides, so then we can reestablish some of the drainage. That's, that's a lot of the problem sometimes is the brush is so close, the guys can't get in to open the drains. So I'm, I'm gonna say different process. This is just raw streets.
I have a question.
Yes, sir.
Okay. Can we all, can we all, can we look at getting the streets, you know, getting what we already have on the list? Get those started, and then continue with other streets that we want? Or do we have to table this until we get all of the streets?
What we voted on last year, that's gonna start the second they get materials and the, uh, the temperature warms to 65.
Okay.
Those streets are gonna get done.
They're under contract.
Which is, which, where they're under contract, which is the left side, which labels Old Ward 1.2, 1.1, or 1.1 and 1.2, and 2.6 and 7. Those all refer to, three pages back, the first S P I page. So that tells you exactly which roads have been voted on, funded, we're just waiting to start.
Okay.
So those will get done.
Okay, we just need.
I'm looking to move forward and get this, these streets this year added. So we're doing two years' worth of streets in one year.
Got it.
And which means we would do 500 and, I don't know, 30, 40,000 dollars in one year.
Okay. I already have a few more streets.
Okay. So any discussion around, should we table and move, opinions of, should we table and move forward? Should we get more, um, ideas from not only y'all, but also Jeremy and Alan? Because I know they have pet peeve streets that, you know, Alan has to re, you know, patch or whatever all the time, and it probably, he probably has some that he, he really wants done. I'd like to support him on that, and, and Jeremy as well. They, they, they battle that together.
Okay, I move that we support, we support them on theirs as well. Let's go ahead and get, get what we have existing down.
Other thoughts, comments?
I think we need to get their response. I mean, I know last year we had said we'd just keep this list and follow through, but again, that's not giving some of these folks that.
Well, and Alan, and Alan and Jeremy are prioritizing what council brings, but I, I think they.
Are gonna go this direction.
They should be their fourth ward. They should add, add some to the list every year.
Yeah.
So do I hear a motion to table eight Echo?
So moved.
I heard a so moved from Mr. Finstrom first, or second?
Second.
Seconded by Turner. All in favor to table?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, six oh, table. Thank you. Eight Foxtrot, consider discussing or approve Polk Street sewer work. So I know Cliff Bodie, Cliff and Anna came and spoke last week. We've also heard from B W Brooks. Not sure who else we've heard recently throughout that, that whole section from V Mart down to, I've heard it goes as far down as Henderson. So I know, Richard, you were there with them and stuff. So what I've been told is there was a sewer project going on, ran out of money, city stopped the work. And I don't know exactly where they stopped it, but it was supposed to go down Broadway, down Polk to Henderson. So I believe from generally V Mart down is undone. We don't have a quote to finish it. I don't know where it was when the project was stopped.
It was, I don't think we even had a quote on that part. This was a, that project that was done was a emergency project. And the, I can't even remember exactly where we got the money. But there was 300 some odd thousand. We said, we're gonna take this money and do that, and do it as far as we can go. So this is to finish up. As of right now, we've got a larger pipe, which I think is a 12-inch, that we put in, but it's got a bottleneck because it feeds into an old 6-inch. So we've got to replace that so that we can increase that flow and not have the backup. I did talk to Alan this afternoon. His intent was, Jeremy, to have a, us a solid quote, not quote, but estimate for doing this work for tonight, but it did not happen. So we'll have it by the next meeting, is what he said.
And Jeremy's actually, he'd already committed to another city's council meeting tonight.
Council meeting tonight.
He had a conflict that was already booked because he's actually presenting some, something to, you know, to get voted on as well, so. So do I hear a motion to table eight Foxtrot, knowing that we need, we need to get that estimate back and bring it back next month?
So moved.
Second.
I heard it.
Can I ask you a question?
Yes, sir.
Uh, I guess, I don't know, it sounds like the, that's the permanent solution to repair all that. But is there any kind of temporary fix that would help right now? You know, I mean, I have no idea how long we're looking at to get, to have that repaired. But like, we have standing water in the, in our cleanout in Park Lot right now with, with no rain or anything. So, you know, we can't flush our commodes, we can't, uh, basically can't use it right now. So what would your suggestion be?
The only, in, in, in myself talking with Alan, and from my past experience, the only possible solution that we can think of is to put a bypass pump. And when you do that, we're gonna have to run a pipe on top of the street, down the middle of the street to get, we'd basically be pumping past that bottleneck.
Right.
And that is the only temporary solution that I, I know of, the only one that Alan knows of.
I want to ask a question. This seems to happen in low-lying areas. That's a flood zone right there. I know Clarksville Street, east and west have, I think west is being taken care of, I mean, east is. But Clarksville West, there's a kind of a low-lying area there between those houses on the south side, and they have a constant problem with sewage backing up when it rains. What, what is it? Is, are the?
Old pipes.
And they're crushed?
There, there are old pipes, and you have what you call inflow infiltration. Every time that you get groundwater, the groundwater seeps in and it takes up the space of the sewer.
So then it starts flowing.
It is flowing back.
And floating up to the top.
Until, until the groundwater can seep out. And that's part of why you've got to replace these old pipes. Not only to, to get the, the increased capacity, but to keep that water, groundwater from inflow.
Are they old, like clay pipes? Is that what's under there?
Well, it could be clay pipes, I mean, even, even old plastic pipes will, will do it. But most of this is clay, if I remember correctly.
Well, we have a regular street program. Do we have a regular sewer drain program?
We've got, we've got regular sewer maintenance, but not project sewer maintenance.
Yeah.
Meaning we're able to fix the 5,000 here and 6,000 and 8,000. We're not, we don't budget for a 300 or 400,000 dollar project outside of grant money. Grant money is designated to the big projects.
Well, I'm just talking about do a section every year.
We can.
Well, we, yeah, that's, we'd have to set it, probably set aside like a street budget to do the same thing. Because our, one of the biggest issues with, with sewer projects is our city crews are not set up with the proper equipment to do the proper depth. I mean, many of these sewer lines are 14, 16 feet deep. And our bicoes just don't do it. You have to have a tri-coat to, to get that level flow, so.
Well, and all the equipment, once you, once you get below about three foot, you've got to have barricades, shored up barricades on both sides, and we don't know.
OSHA requires you to have.
Well, we don't do the streets either, so.
To your, to your point, we can in next year's budget cycle go through and set aside, much like we do for a street budget.
I think we ought to start that.
We're gonna have to, I mean, we're gonna have to go tax increase on that.
Well.
Because there's no finding another, like, right now, we're taking, we've stripped down a whole lot of stuff and we're pushing it towards streets. There's not a ton more to strip down, and we've been adding it to account, which helps.
The other thing, and Jim will remember this because he's the only one that was on the council at that time. When we did the 5.4 million dollar water and sewer bond issue, we knew that we were gonna have to come back and do it, do another one. And, uh, I mean, that's been how many years now? Um, probably at least eight years. So, I mean, we, we know. Six, okay. But we know that that's gonna have to be another project. And what does that cause? It causes rate increases to pay for those bond issues.
So Cliff, answer to you, we, we, we need to get with, consult with Alan to see what other options.
What other options are.
What Richard described, um, and come back to you.
And what would be the best case scenario of having the, the, the permanent repair done, finishing the rest of the 12-inch?
Well, not knowing what the dollars are, but if someone throws me $300,000, it's probably not this year. Just being honest.
And to be honest with you, today's price is, is gonna, gonna be done for 300,000.
So we need to try find another solution for now, something, something else that might work.
We.
Just I talked to Alan.
Let us talk to the engineer.
Follow up with Alan.
Okay.
And, and see what else, because I know, you know, a, uh, there, maybe there are other cheaper, short-term scenarios until we can put together a, a portion of our budget to be able to handle projects like this. Right now, I mean, for years, we've just handled, uh, projects like this through grants.
Okay.
Yeah.
All right, thank you.
So we have not voted on the tabling yet. I have a motion by Richard to table eight Foxtrot. I have a second by Hollis on favor to table eight Foxtrot.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstention? Okay, six oh. Okay, last one, eight Golf, consider discussing or approve the process to form and then launch a quiet zone committee. So obviously, guys, this comes about from the last meeting or two we've had. Different things have been talked about. I had mentioned a committee, but a lot of people have started saying, well, how do we form that? Who's on it? How do you choose who's on it and that sort of thing? So this is on the agenda tonight for that exact purpose. What have you heard from your constituents on a committee doing this? How would we form a committee fairly? How, if not a committee, what else would there be? Of course, what I've written this was about a committee. So what have you heard from people in the, in the, uh, community? And what have y'all, what do y'all think, just flat out? So what have you heard from people in the, in the community and what have y'all, what do y'all think just flat out on what the next step is to look into this?
I'd like to get past it, you know, let's figure it out. Can we afford a quiet zone or not and then move on? Either toward getting the quiet zone or saying until we have a grant, we can't, so.
Yep, so that's the goal. The goal, the goal is to get past this. The goal is to understand the cost and the process and the timing and everything.
Kicking it down the road, let's just do it.
City staff doesn't have the time to look into that. I mean, at hi, at high level, my thought was get a committee together with people that are today for and against it and undecided. Because I'd like a lot of the, I, I want people to be checking their math before it comes back here. I don't want, I don't want the meeting where we consider a proposal from this committee to be a shit show like we normally do. Go ahead and print that if you want to. Because we can screw up a ham sandwich. It's supposed to just be bread, ham and mayonnaise, maybe some cheese, but we can screw that up.
So could we kind of do it like we do other things where each council picks two people, maybe, you know, and just go from there or?
That's one option. I mean, I, I've, I've heard, you know, a single piece of paper turned into city hall for the next thirty days and that will have applicants that want to be part of it. We'll see how many applicants we get. If we get seven, wow, that looks like a committee to me. If we get thirty, okay, it's hard to, hard to wrangle thirty cats. They run all over the place. So to me, we can do a single page letter of interest, you know, application of interest and come back and form a committee. But how would we look at that? Do we, do we have a, are you for again, boxes? Are you for against or undecided? What makes you want to be on the committee? I mean, those sorts of things, because if someone can fill that out and they sound pretty energetic and I don't care if they're for against or, or neutral. I want people of, of all sides of that argument on there to question each other, do the opposing research, check the math. And jointly, they're gonna have to come back with a, with a recommendation to us to say, this is what we found. We're all looking at this saying, it's a million bucks, it's two hundred thousand. Well, somewhere in the middle.
Donna Steele has taken an interest in this and she's supplied a lot of information here. And I've got it, if, if and when the committee is formed, this could be, it has a lot of names and good information, it could be a good starting point for them. I know there were things mentioned that, you know, tourists complaining and we're losing business and all. So just out of curiosity, I look back June of twenty twenty one and June of twenty twenty two. And the actual sales tax went up, the hotel motel occupancy went up, the visitor, I mean, the the tourism building revenue went up. So I don't think that's an argument, but I think it's something we should look into. What's it gonna cost us and can we afford it?
So instead of just fighting the battle here, I'm just talking about putting together a committee and a process.
I think we can go with the applicants and then we can kind of pick from that, let people, I think we can do that. And I mean, I, I think that's a good idea as well.
Jim, any thoughts? Hollis, thoughts?
I was thinking along the lines of each, each alderman appoint one person to, to do it and then hope that we get a, a balance of, of you know, people that are gonna consider all the facts and, and do the thing upright.
Okay, Richard?
I'm torn with this. As it is right now, if we set up a committee, I'm afraid that committee would flounder. Because there's no consistency of the information other than what Donna has produced. I, I have talked to the engineer that is doing this, that has done the study for city of Longview and he has agreed to come speak to the council and just give us his two cents worth. Which maybe we should, should do something of that nature before we charge somebody with doing something that they don't really have a, they don't even really have a basis for. I mean, we can, I know that the zoning committee, how many months have we been there and we're just, I mean, it's finally getting rolling, but it just takes a while to, to get that there. I, I don't know. I mean, I'm not against the committee. I'm just afraid that it's gonna be something that's gonna be a committee that is gonna be year plus.
But we're not in a hurry.
Before the thing ever comes back.
Quiet zones existed since two thousand and five.
Yeah.
So. So you're on the fence.
I'm very much on the fence.
Robin?
Well, I think we need to do something sooner rather than later. And let's, let's get the issue, you know, figured out and move on. If Richard has an engineer that can come and kind of tell us what they spent or what they went through, that would be good information. And maybe with what they tell us, we'll realize it ain't happening. So maybe that would end it right there. But then if it doesn't, we could go on and get this committee formed. I don't know that there are gonna be very many people that actually want to do it.
I don't think so.
So.
Guys, there's a whole lot of people bitching.
Yes.
Those people need to either stand up and be part of, of this solution or stop posting stuff.
Most, most of the people that I have talked to, I would say that of all the people that I have talked to in this city, when you sit down and talk to them about the process and everything, ninety percent, excess of ninety percent are saying, we don't need this.
Okay. We're talking about how we can take this forward.
And I, I agree.
Trying to jump in.
Well, but, but my deal is, and this is why I'm on, on the fence.
If I can hold you just a second, I want to make sure I'm covering council.
Okay.
I'm sorry, Richard, that was you, that was Doug.
Yeah, that's all right.
I've talked to fifty fifty, you know, I've, I've talked to a lot of people who say that, you know, if we have a quiet zone, make sure that the quiet zone is for all of Jefferson instead of the downtown portions. I've also talked to people who, who said, well, I'm originally from Jefferson and I don't even hear the train anymore. And then I've talked to some who said that, that, you know, the train always bothers them, so. It, okay, it's not fifty fifty, it's a little, you know, it's a little bit thirty, thirty three point three percent. But nonetheless, the point is, is that there's different opinions about this quiet zone. And, and as, you know, as for me, I think that what we should do is ask the people of Jefferson, what do they want? Let them volunteer. Let them go ahead and form the committee themselves because we've already, we've already started. In, in fact, when I gave my last input on what we should do, my recommendations, you know, it went all over the place and there was, you know, and I, I'll be honest with you, it does, as long as it don't cost the taxpayers of Jefferson a dollar, I'm, I'm all about it. But the thing is, is that we don't need to bog the council down and spend the money on a quiet zone when there are so many other things that need to be done in this city. But at the same time, if it, you know, for the sake of making sure that everybody has their input, let's put together a committee, let it be people who volunteer and who have an interest in it. And then make sure that they understand that we as a council, we're not looking forward to spending the taxpayers' money. You know, if they want to form a committee, they want to, they want to talk about these things, by all means. You know, I mean, we've had the railroad administration come here and speak to everybody. You have a guy from Longview, you have the, the staff from Ms. Steele. I've talked to Ms. Steele over the phone. She sent me the emails as well. You know, the thing is, let's just let the people decide.
I just noticed that one thing hasn't been mentioned here. I just want to remind the, the council as a Jetco treasurer, there has been funds approved for a survey, professional survey. It's in our budget to, to pay that. I'm not for, I'm not against. I'm for knowledge to figure out where I should be. And that study, I think if you put a committee together, they're gonna determine the same thing. We need more information. So if you still follow through with that, that survey, professional survey that we already have the money allocated for, then take that and give it to your committee and let them work with that. It's like Robin said, this thing comes back ten million dollars, that's gonna be an easy decision for everybody. But if it's gonna come back a million or so and we can find money elsewhere, but you don't know how much it's gonna cost and that's what that study would do, just as a reminder. Thank you, Doug.
One last thing I have to say. I just feel like, I think we owe it to both parties, the neers and the fours. So if we don't go out and let people do the research, it's like you're letting them, I mean, there's nothing wrong with having more information is what I'll say. So I agree with, you know, everybody on do the committee. If we don't agree with what they find, like we said, the money, if it's way too much, then, you know, we don't vote on it or we, we say no. But there's nothing wrong with just having more information is what I say.
All right. So having said that, the way I stated this for an action item was to approve the process to form it, form a committee and, and launch it. I think there's some really good ideas. We did hear the idea of, of an appointment. The applications, getting a third party to come in who's kind of been down there and I think there's probably several different cities that we could probably grab and get that. I guess the way I look at it and, you know, it goes to what everyone's saying, let's, let's get it going, let's move on, let's get to, let's get to some data and get an answer and move on. Whether that's for or against. But if we form a committee, we can always have those third parties come and listen to that saying, you know, have a town hall that is led by those guys. You know, this committee can obviously be over, overseen by council, but I, you know, like I said, I don't think anyone on council needs to be that, you know, on the committee or something. Someone asked me if, if we're gonna sit on the committee, I was like, well, no, I think this really needs to be kind of a grassroots thing. That yes, we need to help support. We need to help give them some boundaries, but they need to meet, they need to do research, they need to hear these third parties and, and get it going. Because we, you know, when I said we're not in a hurry, well, no, we, we're in a hurry to get this behind us. We're in a hurry to make a decision to move forward. And then the decision may be one of those projects that we get is we say it's too expensive, but here's the process, the approximate cost in two thousand and twenty three dollars and we put it on the shelf. Or it's something that, hey, if we get funding here and funding here and a grant here, this can be done in two or three years. I, I don't know what the true answer is. And as I've said before, you know, until the dollars are there, I'm undecided. I mean, I think, I see the pros and I see the cons. I don't want taxpayers to pay for it, so that's clear. I think we're hearing that clearly at, at least with this council. But the way written, eight golf, I mean, it would take a proposal of, you know, motion to form a committee by application for the next thirty days and, you know, that sort of thing. I mean, the only criteria I, I put out there were the old, am I for, against or undecided and why do I want to be part of this committee? Just generic, kind of, why, why do you want to, why are you putting your name on a piece of paper? I, I think something as simple as that, we can probably see how many people come up and, and apply and, and then bring it back up to say, yep, here's a committee, we have enough people, or we have too many.
Okay.
Motion, uh, motion to put together application process for people to form a, with quiet zone committee.
Okay, motion by Will. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Seconded by April. Further discussion?
If you, if you're going to have, have an application process, it needs to be a standard way to fill it out. Basically, there should be, as you said, this is my name, this is where I live, this is how it affects me, this is why I'm interested. Uh, and not just something that's willy nilly so that you can, if you're gonna go through, and if we do have too many, you know, you maybe look at who's in what areas, maybe you don't get the same street if everybody on the street decides they want to do it. Or you don't have all restaurants or you don't have all B and Bs.
So the names will all come back to us?
Well, it's gonna have, but then there's gonna have to be a review process. If you do applications, there's gotta be someone that's gonna review them and then we'll have to do that.
Do two part in one, we could do the, the application and then from the candidates that we get, each person on the council could pick one person, if there's enough to, to pick one person. And so that kind of covers both.
Vote, yea or nay on that person.
Right.
Could you read that motion again? Because I don't think it's anything about applying.
Well, it did. It was an application process based committee is the way it was phrased. I didn't write, I didn't write it down.
Oh, okay.
Melissa would have taped it.
Okay.
Yeah, he made a motion to put together an application process for.
Quiet zone committee.
Quiet zone committee. I just put committee, but quiet zone.
Okay.
Could it, could it be revised in application process in order to form?
Sure.
So friendly amendment to your, okay, so stated.
So stated.
Do you still, do you second the friendly amendment?
Yes, I do.
Okay. All in favor to launch a application based quiet zone committee and at least get applications out there?
To form one.
To form one.
Yes.
And that was a good question.
I said the next thirty days earlier. I mean, you gotta give people time.
Okay, within the next thirty days.
You okay with thirty days, April?
Yes.
Within the next thirty days.
I am by me.
All, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstention? So be it. All right. Discussion items, nine alpha, discuss feasibility of future alley, street closure, conveyance and building permits for the Livwell Enterprises project. John, if y'all can come up to the podium, but please watch the cables. Thank you. Mr. DeWare?
Good evening. I'm very pleased to introduce Paul Sarkosio from White Oak, Texas. Paul and his partner Shane Spencer have created a LLC called Liv, Livwell Enterprises. And to tell you a little bit about them, they have been down from the Lake the Pines to Jefferson by canoe and also by kayak many times. And they love adventure trips. They love, that are oriented toward families and children. And what they've done, they picked some property and made an arrangement to purchase it that is located on the bow where they would like to build some houses built above the flood plain, uh, some buildings built above the flood plains where people can spend the night. And then also they can enjoy the amenities of Big Cypress Bow and also go on adventure trips in Caddo Lake and other adventure trips here. So it's really a very family oriented type of business. And the property they would like to acquire is like, it's, it's bounded by Alley Street on the east. It's below Mosley Street on the north and it's in Holly, fifty nine is on the west. And I think I've already given you all some, some, some documents there on that, but, but they've also come up with a plan of, of locating some of these places where people can spend the night and they can get to know each other and, and have fun in Jefferson. And the, at the very back there is just a sample of a house that's raised with, I think this one is a one bedroom. I think they're proposing a two bedrooms too, but it would be very, very good for our tourist economy here. It also creates a great image for Jefferson and it utilizes one of the, the best assets we have that nobody else can come up with. And that's Big Cypress Bow flowing right through our town. It's, it's an asset that has. It's, it's an asset that has not been developed or used to its full potential, but it was a reason why a town was created here in the first place for navigation. So this navigation that they propose is one that is safe and also it's wholesome, and it'll be really great for our town. So they, we're not asking for any action tonight, but, but, but we want you to know that what we have here is an outline of the area, of the area, and we're, at some point we'll need to get these streets and alleys closed so that property can be properly developed. And of course, none of these streets or alleys have ever been used, at least in my lifetime. And, and also to approve, you know, at some point, the, some construction plans, you know, this is a rough concept right now, but when, when we return again, we'll have even more information for you on that. But, but, but we, but we also want to know if there's any input from you all before we go forward on this so that we can get a feel for what you like, what you don't like, and also get some ideas, you know, because this will, this is all plus for our town.
So guys, just real quick, Duke came to me a week ago and described this project and was wondering, you know, they have a contract on it, but they're in a waiting period, can we, can we, you know, push this thing forward? And I was like, well, what we've done before, when, when someone has come with a building permit application, but they haven't owned the property, we've said, well, look, we can discuss it, we can ask a lot of questions, we can pretty much say, does anyone object if they come back with, once they do have title to the land and stuff? So that's what this is. This is, you know, get feedback, if you've got concerns about this project moving forward before they close on the land, this is, this is the speak now forever, hold your peace.
That's right. I mean, we, any advice you have for us is what we want. This is, but, but we're very, very fortunate to have ideas like this and, and also entrepreneurs here that will come and do things that will be improve people's quality of life.
So of note, Alan met, is it Paul?
Yes.
Paul, Alan met Paul and his team out, and there is water and sewer close, so they could route it onto the property, it's not too far, as you can tell by some of the streets. I know that was big, that's one of the questions I had asked.
Yeah, one of the first things they did was get with Alan to see if there was nearby water and sewer, and they found that there was. And of course, there's electricity too. So it's, it is an area that where there's not much activity in the past, but it's right on the bow and would be a wonderful space between Highway fifty-nine and the boat ramp downtown for people to enjoy the more shallow water there with activity with canoes and kayaks.
Council, what questions do we have for Paul to better describe the project? And any questions slash objections you would have of Paul and his team proceeding with this? They'd really rather not have to buy the piece of property if, if we've got objections.
I'd like to take another look at it because I didn't, I didn't get a clear picture of everything when I was out there before, so I just, I'd like to get a better look at it, eyes on, because I'm not understanding some of the areas.
So, so if I can say something real quickly, a couple of the go-no-gos on this project would be whether or not we could purchase the interior roads. Obviously, we, we need a, just an open concept. And would we need to put, would we be, would we be required to pave our internal streets? Obviously, we'd rather not do that, we'd rather have gravel driveways. And then, and this, it sounds like it might be a no-brainer, but there's some drainage issues, this area is a swamp, it's, it, the, I can't see it really doing anything without a lot of infrastructure being put in. So we'd have to go in there and do some work with the storm drainage system, and we're willing to do that. Shane is a contractor out of the metroplex area, he's since moved to East Texas, and of course, my business has been around forever in Longview. And plumbing is what we do, actually, so. This is kind of, all of this is kind of in our wheelhouse, so none of this is too intimidating to us at all. But the, the property does need some storm drainage rerouting, I'm assuming that we have a little bit of flexibility on that within the confines of this perimeter.
I mean, considering this is a, I mean, we've got platted streets and alleys that would need to be closed, but right now, those are virtually unbuildable. If we were to close those and you purchased those, you wouldn't, they're yours. I mean, you can build them gravel, you can do whatever. I mean, we, we have closed streets and alleys that are about to have a building on top of what used to be a street, a platted street now. So that's, that's one of your
Yes.
This is basically a private business.
Correct.
What I can say, this, like Duke said, is, is a property that's not been used in, in his lifetime and in my lifetime. And don't say a whole lot of promise of it being used other than, you know, if these guys go through with their deal. And I know that the people that rent canoes and kayaks at other places on the rivers and everything, they, they do a real good business. And our bio is kind of a hidden jewel, and I believe they would probably do real well with it.
Yeah, I, I just see this serving a different segment of tourists that would come in here that may not be coming in here now.
I agree with you.
So.
And actually, it's more than canoe rentals, it's more of an excursion, so it'll be a shuttle service.
You know, take them in, put them in and come down.
Take them in and then they just float to their cottage, to this little deal. So it's kind of turnkey, step out, and this is to attract people like my wife, actually, who doesn't really want to, you know, do a lot of legwork. Especially this little float from here to the boat ramp is about a fifty-two minute float.
Right.
And it's a twenty-minute walk back to the property.
Right.
And you got to pass through the entertainment district to get there, so.
Right.
It's very exciting.
And you're looking at basically, what is that, ten structures I see on this map?
So initially, it's a five structure start out, and then as we hopefully will grow into, and I think the land can support quite a bit more, I think it can support fifteen to twenty.
Okay.
Which is basically what they are, is more or less a B and B type thing, so that would bring in some, some more tax dollars.
Yeah. I don't have a problem with
Jim, April thoughts? Robin thoughts?
Are you planning any, to dig any canals that bring the water up to the cabins?
If you've walked on the property, there's quite a bit of canals right now going through the backside, especially this backside close to fifty-nine, but no, ma'am, there, we do not intend to do that. It's going to be more of a landing, and then probably some, some sort of, because, some sort of a landing for not just the canoes, but also for like boat motors, big boats from Caddo coming up. I think that would be a great landing place to kind of park your boat, make a day trip out of something from Caddo to here, and then maybe get on something, and then just go hang out downtown, and then come back to your boat, and then motor back to Caddo.
Rent you some golf carts and
Exactly.
Yep. The, the only, and I know you being a contractor, you understand this, with this being basically a wetland, when you start changing the pattern of flow, that's going to have to be taken care of, probably through the core.
Yes, sure.
Yep.
So Jim, Jim kind of brought up a like point, you know, is there any Corps of Engineer issues?
That's what, yeah.
So I think that if we just, if we just clean out some of the stuff that's already there, because I think earlier someone was mentioning the brush was growing up, I think if we just get in there and clean some of that stuff out, a lot of this will take care of itself with very little, if any, dirt movement.
Well, and I know your clientele wants that natural look, but at the same time, you know, we, we don't disturb core area. It's
Right.
You know, forbidden domain for us.
Sure.
April, anything?
I'm actually excited for it. I normally go to the cabins in Broken Bow, so I think this is, I think it'll be very good, and after looking at Facebook, people were complaining about one of the hotels here, so you might be booked up whenever you
I think this could be very similar to Broken Bow, very good feel, like it.
Or the White River in Arkansas.
I just say, don't put them too, too close together, you know, don't put them, just give people a little space.
All right. Any other questions for Paul? So Paul, obviously this was just discussion, saw some questions, not sure you saw many objections per se, so.
Well, if someone had said, hey, no, I want you to pave the streets, then, you know, that might be a deal killer because paved streets are, of course, very costly and they don't bring another dollar to the table. And then if we couldn't get the road purchased inside, then, you know, then that would be very difficult to do what we're trying to do.
Yeah.
And we are trying to keep it very, very natural, keep as many trees as we can.
Okay. All right. Paul, thanks for coming.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Appreciate it. Folks, discussion item nine, Bravo Strategic Plan Core Team Update. Robin, Will, and Melissa?
We had a recent meeting here, the Texas Target Community students and staff came, and their department was transportation. So we had people come in from the community, we had Tech Dot was here, our superintendent schools was here, and the task force committee was present. And it was a really good work session and, and had maps out and talking about the problems in transportation in the area and where focuses, you know, where there should be a focus on transportation or, and it was a really good, they, they derived a lot of information from it, and they're going to go back and that'll be just part of their report that they bring to us. Do you have anything to add?
Well, one of the things that they, that they talked about was streets and street signs, and, and, you know, I brought up the street sign issues in our ward, and what they would like to do is get the, the street sign information from every one of the, every one of the city councilmen for their particular wards, and that way they can input that information on the, on their maps, and then they can be able to update us on what they can and can't do, or, you know, how progress is going on that part.
Okay, good. Melissa, anything to add?
I thought that the meeting had a very good turnout, there was quite a few people here. We broke out into sessions, each table had maps, and we got to identify the problem areas with transportation, with sidewalks. They had discussed routes for the kids to go from like the junior high to the stadium all throughout the city. And I'm curious to see, you know, what everybody came up with in that grouping, but when it comes back, the, the end result of what the discussions were, because I thought it was very, very well attended and very beneficial for the city.
Good. Next scheduled meetings or next step of the process?
March, isn't it in March?
Yes.
The next meeting's in March, it'll be on a Thursday, it'll be here.
I don't think we know the topic yet.
We don't.
No.
We don't. But we can get that information out to y'all.
Okay, just let us know. Any questions for the subcommittee? I don't know what to call y'all.
Well, another thing too, the, the contract will be coming, you know, for this upcoming semester. So I just wanted to make everybody wear that.
Okay. Thank you, Robin, and Will, and Melissa. Okay, executive session, we are going to retire to executive session under section five-five-one-oh-seven-one and five-five-one-oh-seven-four. We're going to close this down at seven-twenty-six, and we will come back.